... meeting to order. Roll call, please.
President Byrne.
I'm here.
Justice Schultz.
Here.
Justice Markport.
Here.
Justice Cook.
Here.
Justice Oppenheimer.
Here.
Justice Takaoka.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is due to play of the United States of America, considered a republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great peace and justice of our God.
Okay, are there any citizens that want to address the board on anything?
This time you're number one with a bullet.
You want to say something? Yeah, sure.
A few meetings ago, I brought up about the fact you can't go straight from the Ring Road into Hawthorne Melody, or from the exit from Hawthorne Mall by Denny's, go straight ahead. And someone was going to, I guess you had been concerned about it, and I wondered if there was any follow-up.
David.
I do remember our list from a prior meeting, but you said in terms of ring?
The Ring Road, you know, going straight across to Lee's Dog, and Denny's, straight across.
What they're gonna fix.
What they're gonna fix.
So we are working through some, we're working through some easements with Centennial Cross, with Centennial, and with Denny's and some other ownership. We need to get those easements. We will share that in a plan with IDOT. We've been into IDOT for permits already. We're through the third review. So once we get this information to IDOT, they will issue us a permit, we will hire a contractor, and we will effect that change. So it's in process. It's important, we get that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I've seen some people do cross that way illegally and potentially cause accidents, so we certainly want to.
Okay. All right. Is that about it on citizens' comments? Okay. First item is swearing in of our new trustee. And that is Nancy Foster. Forrester.
Come on down.
Forrester.
Thank you. I'm gonna do this like I would do the swearing in of an officer. I'm assuming that this is your family here. Would you like to introduce your family and have them step up with you?
Sure. This is my husband, Paul. And then my children, Nick and Andrew, 18 and 16.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Nancy Forrester.
I, Nancy Forrester.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of village trustee.
The duties of the office of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd shake your hand, but we can't do that.
Thank you.
Just need your signature here. And then.
Mark, you know, here, are you signed?
Do you want me to do this one, too?
Please. That's your oath of office. This is the official commission. I just need to make copies of these and I'll give them back to you tonight.
Do I sign this one?
Yeah, you guys gotta move one.
Oh, that's right.
Did you need me on that one?
Nope.
All right. Thank you.
Family can go home now. And you can take your seat up on the stage. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, is everybody settled in?
Well, he's big.
Okay. All right. Next is village manager, flesh hour. Declaration 2013 continuation of a state of emergency in the village of Vernon Hills.
Thank you, sir. This is, as you just mentioned, this is the continuation of the emergency declaration, state of emergency that was signed by yourself back in March. And it just continues to the next regularly scheduled board meeting. And it's anticipated that the state of emergency will continue as long as the governor's state of emergency also remains in effect. And the second item is trick-or-treat discussion. After last year, I never thought I'd be talking about trick-or-treat as much as we did last year, but apparently there's a lot of concern. We brought this up at the last board meeting. I thought we'd have plenty of time to talk about it, but it seems like everyone is trying to make plans for Halloween. The CDC has issued their guidelines stating that they feel that trick-or-treating in person is what they consider a high-risk activity. But with the understanding that Halloween is not a national holiday and it's not regulated or controlled by the village, we're gonna leave that choice, or we recommend that we leave that choice up to the individual families, parents, and children if they're gonna participate. If they choose to participate, the recommended hours would be from 2:00 to 6:00, 2:00 in the afternoon till 6:00 PM on Saturday, October 31st, that they trick-or-treat in small groups, wear face coverings under their masks, and that they have parental escorts and all the usual things. If it's dark, carry a flashlight, wear reflective clothing, et cetera. Most of the extra requirements or recommendations that we are suggesting really apply to the people that are gonna be handing out the candy or participating. First of all, on our website, we have the signs that you see up above you there. If you're going to participate in trick-or-treat, obviously, we suggest you put the green one on your front window. If you do not wish to participate, please put the red one in your window. If you're not going to participate, if it's possible, turn your front lights off so the children know it and don't come to your house accidentally. The other way, you know, please turn on your lights if you want to participate and keep your door open so people can see activity in the house, not wide open, but your storm door. Adults handing out candy should wear masks, face coverings, and latex gloves. They should hand the candy out if they're going to do it that way. They should not let children reach into a basket and take their own pieces out, minimize the number of people that are touching the candy. I already said we're, you know, lights on, signs posted, all the other stuff. And all the general rules would apply using wrapped candy, being careful. And the CDC also recommends that if possible, maybe individual bags of candy placed on a table outside and let the kids come by and pick it up. I've even seen one YouTube video where someone put a, like a 20-foot section of PVC plastic gutter from their second-story window down to a barrel at the bottom, and kids would put their trick-or-treat bag below it, and they would drop the candy and let it slide all the way down into the bag. Kind of creative and kind of fun. But that would be our recommendation, should the board concur.
Yeah, okay. Well, you know, being Saturday again, you know, I would think we're gonna have quite a few people come out, as we certainly did last year after we canceled Halloween trick-or-treating on the 31st, which worked out fine because of the snowstorm. But with that said, yeah, that went that Saturday, and there was a higher number of people that came out. So it's just, I'm just commenting on what happened last year. So Saturday people are home.
The 2:00 to 6:00 timeframe works out well, too, in that because we haven't gone to standard time yet, it's still light out. It's getting very, very close to deep dusk, but it's still light out at 6:00. So the whole window is in a daylight timeframe.
That's what the discussion was. We had a discussion on that, and we agreed the same thing as you, that it's, for the most part, daylight, and trick-or-treating is for the younger children especially. So it's nice to have them do that when it's light out and you can see their costumes and decorations.
Okay. And the signs, you can print them?
Signs, you can, signs, you can print them. They're on our website, and we're going to print some extra copies, have them at the front desk here, and people can stop by and pick them up if they don't have access to a printer.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need to take any kind of affirmative action, or just?
I don't think so.
Okay. So this will be the general guidelines, and you'll post it?
Absolutely.
Innumerable places?
Absolutely. It's ready to go. We'll have it up.
And of course, on the electronic signs.
Certainly.
Okay. All right, thanks, Mark. Waste update, John Petrillo, Assistant Village Manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Trustees. As we are aware, the village has a contract with Advanced Disposal for residential waste services. Due to an oversight on the part of Advanced, the rate increase that was supposed to go into effect on December 1, 2019 was not implemented. The waste contract is a five-year agreement that has rates defined each year, starting each December 1. Advanced GM Chris Manley advised their automated billing system failed to activate the 2019 rate increase, and this continued for 10 months into 2020. What does this mean? Residents will realize the savings from the 2020 service year, average savings per resident is approximately $2.07 from the rate increase that should have went into effect on December 1, 2019.
Is that a month?
It's about $0.27 per month. So times 10, 270. And there's a scale. There's some people that have multi-pickup per week and additional services, and there's some that have every other week. And so it's an average of 270. It'll be more for some, less for others. As Advanced has said, they will not attempt to collect the past rate increases. The 2020 fee schedule will be corrected effective October 1, 2020, and remain in place for the remainder of the 2020 rate structure, which is two months. On December 1, 2020, and per the terms of the contract, the new rate for 2021 takes effect. To get the rate structure on its contractually agreed-upon schedule, residents that are on a billing schedule that covers October through December will see the 2% increase for only the months of October and November. Then on December 1, the 2021 rate increase will be on the same invoice. For residents who are billed November through January, you will see a 2% increase for only November 2020. The adjustment needed to correct the previous year's invoicing, followed by your 2021 increase on this invoice. Staff from Advanced apologizes for the confusion, and as a gesture of good faith, Advanced will not seek collection on the lost rate increases, which village-wide is estimated to be over $20,000. As this invoicing began in October, we've been communicating this on all the village platforms, to include the Village Voice, the website, and on our cable channel, and that'll be on this board's meeting as well. If there's any questions, I can answer. Thank you.
Okay, any comments or questions? All right. Next is the Finance Director's update.
Good evening. In your packet, I had an update for our coronavirus modeling that we had done back in April. I'm happy to report that, for the most part, that this, the modeling for the month of August did stand up to what we had anticipated. The large jump that you did see in revenue was a one-time permit, and so that actually is, you know, a benefit to the village, but not something that's gonna be an ongoing basis on a monthly, ongoing monthly basis. When I, spoken to you last month, I talked about there, I did have some potential concerns looking at sales tax and how the model was progressing. I am happy to report that it did stand up to what we had anticipated. It's something I will continue to monitor as we go forward, but I am feeling more comfortable that the numbers will stay as Ed had worked on in the past and had modeled. The one area I will be looking at and adjusting is the food and beverage tax amount. That is anticipated to go back to 100% in the month of October. However, with the capacity issues that restaurants are going to be facing, I don't believe they're going to be able to make up the capacity differences to get back to that 100%. So when I come back to you in the month of November with the September information, I will be adjusting the October and November model that you see on here to be more in line with that capacity number, plus obviously some delivery amounts. And I have gotten some information just on how some of the regional businesses are handling this in terms of what their actual sales are. So I think it'll give us a good indication of what we'll be looking at coming into the winter. And so I will be reducing that. On a positive note, if you look at the overall, we had anticipated to see our revenues down about $3 million at this point. Post-April, we're only down 1.73 million. So I think even with the amount that we will be reducing the food and beverage tax, we will still be ahead of what we had anticipated to be at. And so I think, it's obviously not a great time still with the virus and everything and how it's affecting businesses, but I do think that we're weathering the storm as best as we can. And that's kind of my report, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
And the general fund is 22 million?
Yes.
Okay. And that's down from what?
It's down from around 25, 25, 26 million on the revenue side.
Okay. This is an interesting year, which is an understatement. So, okay, any comments or questions? No. Thank God for big boxes. Okay. Next is the Andibus Agenda. Is there...
I'd like...
Oh, I'm sorry, Chief of Police. I missed the, no.
No.
No, he doesn't have any talking part. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve A through K with the exception of C. I'd like C to be on a separate vote.
Okay. All right. So A through B, D through K.
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve?
So made. Second.
Motion and second. Roll call, please.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justice Schultz.
Aye.
Markport.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Oppenheimer.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Forrester.
Okay. Motion carries. Item C, approval of village board minutes of September 15, 2020. Any comments or questions on that?
Motion to approve. Just making note to the new trustee that she wasn't here for that meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justice Schultz.
Aye.
Markport.
Abstain.
Cook.
Aye.
Oppenheimer.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Forrester.
Abstain.
Motion carries. Okay, unfinished business or additional business? Senior bus donation discussion.
Yeah. Included in your board packet, a memo that I put together last week. At the September 1 village board meeting, Public Works Director Dave Brown led a discussion regarding the possible disposition of the senior bus that we have in our inventory. Senior bus is no longer used because we replaced it with the swipe card taxi cab program for the seniors. This service has been in effect for just over a year now and seems to be working satisfactorily. The bus is in very good shape, and we'd like to see it have a good home and be used for, you know, for its intended purpose instead of just rusting down at the Public Works facility. In an emergency, we still have a transit van capable of transporting up to seven individuals that needed, if needed. At the conclusion of the discussion last time, the consensus of the board was to consider declaring the bus surplus and consider donating it to a 501(c) organization. Staff was directed to take the necessary steps to see if we can get submissions from qualifying organizations. In response, village staff requested organizations that may be interested in obtaining the bus to submit letters of request. Notices were posted on the village's website, social media, and in the village's newsletter, the Village Voice. In response to these postings, the village received two letters of interest, which I included in your packet. The first is from the Riverside Foundation in Lincolnshire, and the second is from the Special Recreation Association of Central Lake County. Staff has had several discussions regarding the final disposition of the bus, and while both of these organizations provide tremendous services, staff recommends awarding the bus to the Special Recreation Association of Central Lake County for the following reasons. One, their organization is based here in Vernon Hills, and number two, the bus was purchased with Vernon Hills funds and should be primarily used to provide transportation for the residents of Vernon Hills. And three, Vernon Hills already has an established relationship with the Central, Central SRCLACBDFZ. While this recommendation is certainly open to discussion, if the board concurs, staff would be looking for consensus or direction for staff to move forward with the necessary paperwork and ordinances, declare the bus's surplus, and transfer ownership to the Special Recreation Association.
Okay. We said, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I think that's, that's the ideal group to give it to. They work closely with the park district and a lot of other things here in the village, so I think that's a perfect donation.
Yeah. My question is, do we, and this is directed at council, do we have to sell this, like, for $1 to them?
The, sell the bus? Or is that what you're?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that that's required. I'd have to take a look, take a look at the regulation.
Last time you said all we needed to do was create an ordinance declaring it as surplus.
Oh, as surplus property. All right. Sure, I misunderstood the question. To get rid of property, you have to pass an ordinance to declare it as surplus. And you can, in that ordinance, allow the manager to determine the best means to dispose of property. So if you wanted to make a sale at less than market, in this case, for this purpose, you could certainly do that, but you'd have to declare it as surplus.
As I said, I'll give the dollar.
Yeah, we got Markport to give the dollar.
I'll just say, I pay the dollar if that's...
Tim Knuckles has the dollar.
We've got a dollar with him.
He pays you the dollar.
Again, you know, we... There's someone in the audience tonight.
Brought a dollar.
Tim pays you the dollar. You're giving them a bus.
There's someone in the audience tonight, and actually, I'd like to hear from them because particularly in this year of COVID, I know your normal fundraising opportunities are kind of, so this might not be a bad opportunity. Give us an update.
Yeah, Tim, you can come up here. Oh, you got a microphone now? No, no, we're not trading hands.
Yeah, come over there.
Especially you don't want to use the mic that, oh, did you?
Tim Knuckles. I'm a Vernon Hills resident. Excuse me. I have a bad throat right now. And I am the SRHCLC Foundation Board President. Yeah, it's been a pretty troubling year, but we are definitely weathering the storm as well. We have our virtual programs that are very popular. They're up and running. Participants are fantastic. Everything's moving along fantastically as well. So I appreciate everything you guys do for us.
Yeah.
How are you gonna handle the Christmas tree sale this year, or?
It's gonna be a challenge, but we're actually working with a online platform as well. We're gonna go virtual. You'll look on our website, and you'll see some pretty interesting stuff. I would definitely reach out to you guys, and I appreciate everything you do.
Yeah, sure. Okay, all right. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this?
Is there any formal action that we need to take tonight?
Have to wait until the green light comes on. Yeah, I'd like to request a motion for staff to prepare the necessary ordinances, declare the bus surplus, and dispose of it through a donation to the Special Recreation Association of Central Lake County.
Motion so made.
If I talk slow, I can do that.
Yeah, what you just said.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
I didn't hear who made the motion in the second.
Tom, and Mike is the second.
Mike's the second.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justice Markport.
Aye.
Justice Cook.
Aye.
Justice Oppenheimer.
Aye.
Justice Takaoka.
Aye.
Justice Forrester.
Aye.
Justice Schultz.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the historic first vote of trustee, the new trustee.
Well, no, her first vote was an abstention.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right. Well, this is, yeah. Forrester. Nancy Forrester. Forre... What?
Forrester.
You got it.
Yeah, I know. Well, I kind of blew it the first time, you know. You know. Okay. All right. Motion carries. Okay, what do we got next?
Health insurance.
Yeah, okay. Are you gonna speak to this one, Kristen?
I am.
Okay.
All right. Village President, Board of Trustees, I have joined you this evening to discuss the village's health insurance renewal. Village staff has worked closely with Tom Duran of First Benefit Marketing, the village's insurance broker, to evaluate the medical, dental, and vision contracts. I am pleased to notify you that the village was presented with a renewal from Blue Cross Blue Shield that would result in an overall savings for the new plan year, which doesn't happen very often. Blue Cross initially presented the village with an 11% increase over the current rates on the medical. However, since our time with Blue Cross, we have seen a substantial decrease in our claims experience. We're currently running 67% since December of 2019. Based on this decrease, the village was able to negotiate a much more desirable increase, or decrease in this case. Last week, I included calculations in the board packet outlining the renewal premiums and costs to the village representing a small savings. Since then, the village was able to secure an additional 1% deduction on the medical premiums, resulting in a savings of 1.6% under the current rates. This would amount to just over $30,000 in savings. It's important to note that this additional 1% savings is dependent upon the village also electing the dental plan through Blue Cross. The only change to the plans is that the current $0 deductible PPO plan that we offer, they are no longer offering. The replacement plan is almost identical. The only difference is the out-of-pocket limits are increasing a little bit. While we did receive a competitive quote from Cigna, it was not able to beat the quote that we received from Blue Cross. Also, since last week, the village negotiated an additional percentage point off the dental premiums that I provided you with, bringing the renewal on the dental down to a 4% increase. The increase on the dental is due to high utilization of the plan during the previous, as well as the current plan year, and the 4% increase would result in an annual increase of $6,200 on the dental with no plan design changes. Vision was initially up for renewal after a two-year rate guarantee ended. However, Blue Cross extended their rate guarantee for an additional two years for the 2021 and 2022 plan years, so the premiums would remain the same. Again, no plan changes there. I also want to mention that earlier today, Blue Cross announced a new COVID relief premium credit that would provide the village with a 15% refund on the November medical premiums, and a 50% credit on the November dental premiums. We're awaiting additional information from Blue Cross on this new relief program, but based on our calculations, the village would stand to receive a credit of roughly $30,000 for wellness-related activities, including flu shots, biometric screenings, all the things that we had been doing prior to the pandemic and will continue doing in the future. It's our opinion that these wellness efforts do help lower our claims by early detection and improving people's health, so we're really excited about having that additional credit to use towards that. Village staff continues to value the relationship with Blue Cross. Our employees, our dependents, our retirees have expressed their positive feedback on the coverage, claim processing, and customer service. And based on this exceptional service, the desirable coverage, and the reduction in overall premium, it is the recommendation of village staff and First Benefit Marketing to renew medical, dental, and vision insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield. By doing so, it is estimated the overall annual savings would be nearly $25,000, $20,000 of which would be the village's share of the savings. Village staff is seeking motion from the board to prepare a resolution to renew the medical, dental, and vision contracts for a December 1 renewal. Any questions?
Kristen, from last year, what was the, that was considerable drop even with last year's?
So last year, we actually had a slight increase. I believe it was 7%. The year before is... The year before is when Blue Cross came in and kinda blew our minds and said, hey, we're gonna give you this substantial decrease. We're gonna make your benefits even greater, um, but you'll pay less out-of-pocket. Um, so that was two years ago. Last year, we did have a slight increase, um, which they kind of offset with a wellness credit. Um, but this year, it sounds like we'll not only receive the, a $30,000 credit to use for wellness, but we'll also see, um, $30,000 lower in the medical, a little bit higher on the dental.
Okay, any comments or questions?
I'm thrilled that we're not having the force to do this at the last minute like we usually have.
Yes, I, uh, I put the pressure on this year to get it done nice and early. Um, so I'm glad to be here tonight, having this discussion.
It's terrific. Everything you've said is terrific tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thanks, Kristen. Now, okay, we need a motion, right?
Right.
Can I ask?
Seeking a motion for direction.
Hang on. So, in, in our packet, there was a $0?
Yes, so the.
Deductible, so it changed from?
Yeah, so the rate, what you're seeing right now, um, it's still a $0 deductible PPO plan. There's just, um, the, the exact plan that we have had different out-of-pocket limits. Um, and so it is still a $0 deductible plan. No changes to the co-pays, to the deductible, to the co-insurance. It's just a change on that out-of-pocket max.
Where was the change?
So, it was $250 out-of-pocket max for an individual, which included co-pays and everything. Um, that's increasing to a $1,000 out-of-pocket max, um, and that's for, um, individual, and then the family went from 1,000 to 3,000.
Thank you.
Okay. So, is there, is there a motion?
I think, Kristen, you're seeking a motion to direct staff to prepare the necessary documentation for the renewal?
Correct. We'll, uh, and put it on the omnibus the next.
Yes.
So made. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justice Cook.
Aye.
Justice Oppenheim.
Aye.
Justice Takaoka.
Aye.
Justice Forrester.
Aye.
Justice Schultz.
Aye.
Justice Markort.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Kristen.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we, we, we need a motion, what, to adjourn, to go to closed session?
Correct, uh, and we do have an additional basis, uh, personnel, litigation, as well as review of minutes.
Okay, is everybody clear on that? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn, to go to closed session?
So made. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Justice Oppenheim.
Aye.
Justice Takaoka.
Aye.
Justice Forrester.
Aye.
Justice Schultz.
Aye.
Justice Markort.
Aye.
Justice.
Aye.
Motion carries.